Welcome everybody to Monday, March 21st, 2016 Bladen County Commissioners Meeting. We'd like Mr. Reverend Larry Hayes, Good News Baptist Church, to provide the invocation, and Greg Martin will lead us in the presence of the leaders. Please stand.
Father Hayes, Father, we thank you for Bladen County and all the officials that help operate this county under your guidance. Father, I ask you to look down tonight with special interest to touch the hearts of our commissioners, our attorneys, and all our leaders forward. Give them the very best of your attention, guide them in direction. And Father, we thank you so very much for taking care of Bladen County, watching over it, and blessing the citizens. God, I ask you tonight to reach down and just bless the day of little celebration of birthdays, Commissioner Daniel and our attorney, Lexi Johnson, Lord. Bless the given long-legged days for the blessed. Please, thanks we ask in Christ Jesus' name and all of God's people. Amen.
The leaders stood the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, motion to approve consent items.
Mr. Priest, I'd like to add an item to the agenda. I'd like to add it to 7E.
7E?
A lot of requests from Bladen County schools.
Motion approved with a yawn there.
Make the motion, Mr. ... Okay. Any discussion? No discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Against, no? Motion carries. Okay. Motion approved consent items. Is that just, we didn't want to do that first, don't we?
We just did.
We did that in your other motion. Okay. Okay. We have a public hearing regarding this fiscal year 2016-17 budget. Anybody would like to come up and make a comment? Anybody ought to come up?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just be glad to speak briefly.
Go ahead.
The purpose of this public hearing is to remind the commissioners is to, we did a mountain of newspapers as well as a survey, just to look at feedback and guidance from the citizens, and to priorities for the board to consider in the development of the 2016-2017 budget this year. So that's the purpose of this public hearing right away.
Any other comments? If none, special recognition tonight, we have a retirement, Mr. Robert Mazur, he's retiring effective March 31st, 2016, which is not far off. We're going to ask him to come up. We've got a presentation. Robert has been, he's been here for many years. He's done a great job. I hate to tell you how many years he's been here. But he's local, played sports, he's playing high school, was a very good athlete, and he's going to be dearly missed in your position. We've got a new hire, but it'll be harder to do what you've done. And basically, it's like King of Hannity, he's done it with not much else. I mean, I'm talking about with an assistant which we never gave you one. So the flag's going to read, "Grateful appreciation to Robert Abel Mazur for dedicated service to the people of Bladen County, Adjunct Service Director, presented by the Bladen County Board of Commissioners, given this 21st day of March 2016. Years of service, July 87th through March 2016." Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You want to say anything?
I'm going to man a few words. But I do appreciate that. And I have enjoyed my time working for Bladen County, and I want to thank each and every one of you for putting up with me, and many times that I had to come to y'all.
Thank you, Robert.
Yeah. It's been a pleasure working with each and every one of you, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Robert.
And I have complete confidence in the new guy that's going to be taking over. I'm sure that he'll do a good job, but it's been a long time coming, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you.
Robert, can I get your new cell number?
I think I'm going to keep the old one and give the new guy a new one.
The next item on our agenda is to have a special recognition for East Bladen Basketball Team that just finished into playoffs and went to the Eastern Finals and lost the Eastern Finals both games. Worked hard, played hard, had a good year. Patty Everett is the coach. She's been to the playoffs about every year, to the finals, and it's just been a remarkable year for her and her teammates. Their team has really worked hard and done a good job over the years. And I'd like just for Everett to come forward.
Team teammate?
Yeah, team. I'd like your team to come up and face the crowd and tell them your name and why you're in school. We have seniors and we have seniors and freshmen, and so come over here, girls, everybody can see us. If you would, just...
Knock it up where everybody can get into physical.
Yeah, come over here. One or two little mucker bikes. We have a proclamation.
Okay, we have a proclamation here dedicated to the East Bladen Lady Eagles Basketball Team. It says, "Whereas the East Bladen High School Lady Eagles, under head coach Patty Everett and assistant coaches Alan West and Megan Kirby, is to be recognized and honored for their outstanding 2015-2016 girls' basketball season. Whereas the East Bladen High School Lady Eagles Basketball Team obtained success this year by paying a record of 31-1, is to be commended for that. And whereas this success resulted in the team capturing the 2016 Full County Conference regular season championship. And whereas these accomplishments come as a result of true commitment on the part of each member of the team, as well as dedication and guidance provided by their coach, and whereas by their accomplishments, this group of athletes has brought honor and recognition to East Bladen High School, as well as the County of Bladen. And whereas the 2015 County Conference Champions are Abby Ward, Lexi Mendo, Michelle Page, Chadeja Brown, Emily Scott, Lacy Thug, Miller Heston, Houston, Danielle McDow, Christina Carmody, Ashley Harden, and Tyra Moore Peterson. Now therefore, bids acclaimed that the Bladen County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and commend the East Bladen High School Lady Basketball Team, as well as their coaches for their accomplishments during the 2015-2016 season, adopted this 21st day of March 2016. We have pens for each lady. Again, on behalf of myself, I'd like to congratulate you ladies. You know, they did an outstanding job. Great teamwork creates great results. To continue to work as a team, some of you, any seniors, so hope you much success hopefully in basketball after high school. But again, teamwork is the key. As long as you involve in teamwork, everything will be all right and you'll be successful.
Oh, Ms. Everett, would you like to say a little few things about your team?
Well, it's just a hard-working group of girls. You know, we build our foundation off of discipline, and they're very disciplined in the classroom first. Our GPA, overall team GPA is 3.5. You know, we didn't have any problems. You know, they just come to practice and they work hard and we get things done. And we did the best we could. I think we gave 100% all year in every game that we played this year. I'm very proud of them. I know the county is. I know a lot of people in the region, even across the state. We got a lot of emails, phone calls, texts. But one of the hardest-working groups of young ladies that I've ever worked with, I've been coaching for 20 years, and they've taught me a lot. So I'm thankful for them. I know you are. And I'd like to thank Coach Priest for everything that he's helped me with at school, and having us here tonight. And I'd like to thank all the county commissioners for everything that you have done for Bladen County schools. These kids really appreciate that and everything that you've done for Bladen County.
At this time, we're going to have a little refreshments. I'll go down into the refreshment room, the next room to right, and for Mr. Mazur and the East Bladen Basketball Team. Y'all go first. Somebody to lead them, and I'll follow behind. To Ms. North Carolina, contestants Haven Cashel and Anna Grace Allen. What a pleasure.
Motion to appropriate $500 for those two representing Ms. North Carolina.
Motion by Mr. Peterson, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? No discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, item number six on the agenda is individuals, delegations wishing to address commissioners. Anybody who would do so this time, want to address the commissioners by any problem or anything, good, without any problems. That's good. Okay. At this time, I'd like Ms. Lisa Coleman, Finance Officer, to come forward, and she has some items to go over with us.
Okay, the first item is the presentation of the audit. I'm going to put it as audit advice.
Okay, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and deliver the results of our audit for the 2014-15 audit process. Thanks to, and what you've got in front of you is the bound audit, the blue copy. That's the details, the big and very informative information. The other is a clear handout that I put together with some items I think are important for you to notice. There also is our required communications that we've come before tonight to express the results of the audit and things that are within some standards that we need to communicate to you. And to start off with, again, thanks to y'all, to Greg and Lisa and her staff, as well as the department heads that you have, have always been very helpful to us and provided us information quickly and helped us get through the process as painless as possible. During our audit, of course, we deal with Lisa and Greg, and we discuss issues, minor, big, small, large, all the different kinds that come up. We talk about things that could change, any adjustments that we have. So now I come to you to present the results and communicate to you things that are required to so as our professional team is required. Flipping to the first slide, these are areas, again, that we require to identify to you and wanted to express opinion. That's the main purpose of our engagement. We express an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion does not sound good as a high opinion that we can render in such an engagement. We plan and perform our audits and audit procedures to obtain reasonable assurance. This is enforced because we don't obtain absolute assurance, because that would be impossible and very costly, inefficient, or ineffective, which wouldn't be, audit fees high enough to, for that to be justified. We then determine our audit procedures based on that information and our assessment of the accounting. We evaluate the county's accounting procedures. We meet, again, with Lisa and Greg. We have engagements to discuss our procedure regarding those accounting policies, and then we identify areas that we may feel need to adjust. As I can be glad to say, those adjustments have been the same as usual as the past several years. They're minor adjustments that Lisa and I get with, and none have been made out of any concern demeanor in a normal course of going through our engagement. The planning, scope, and timing of the audit, that's identified when we signed the audit contract. We provide to you an engagement letter that kind of goes through all the information that's required to communicate to y'all, the legal jargon for the procedure. On the next slide, page two, significant accounting policies. In your blue binder of the audit, starting on page 22, is all of that in detail. I try to make this presentation very short and sweet. If you've got questions, though, my information is on the front for telephone and email. Interrupt me now if you're going to it. I'm available for tonight and anytime I'm at your discretion, because I do work for the board. Y'all are the ones that hired me, and y'all are the ones that ask questions. My real responsibility. Going now, adoption of changes in accounting policies. There was one, it was mandated throughout the country regarding pension liabilities and the requirement for each local government within the local retirement system to show a portion of the whole liability with an asset. This year, it was an asset. The significant accounting estimates, Lisa and I go through those. An example would be bad debt, the water bills, or taxes that be written off. We make a reasonable assumption and go forth with that. Difficulties, disagreements with management, there were none, never have had any. Correct or incorrect misstatements, these would be adjustments that I recommend that Lisa did not make. There were none of those. All of the adjustments, like I had mentioned before, she approved and was willing to make those adjustments. She also signed management representations. There were no other outside consultations with accounting, with accountants, which is mainly the control opinion shop. We'll find an accounting policy that fits your situation that may not be unacceptable. Other issues, there were none. The other findings, if you turn to page four, we'll go over communications of the internal control structure. This is a, this letter does have a modification in regards to a finding as it relates to segregation of duties, which has been something the county has to hear, which is not cost benefit to hiring additional personnel in certain areas of the accounting structure. The other issue is regarding compliance with Medicaid eligibility. And once we found the issue that we had, it was later determined that everybody was eligible. However, there was a break in that policy, or that decision determined that. Vicious has been a great help of DSS. Her and her staff have worked very diligently with Greg and Lisa in putting forth a plan, and they've got that. Greg can very conditude details on that and the step-by-step of how they're changing that to avoid that for future audits. On page five is a schedule of findings and questions. Vicious states that, again, we had an unmodified opinion on the financial statement. We also had an unmodified opinion on the compliance portion of our audit regarding your compliance with grant requirements. Even though we did have some findings, they weren't significant enough or material enough to qualify our opinion, which, again, unmodified sounds bad, but it's the highest opinion that we can live with. Flipping over a few more pages, pages six, seven, and eight, really address everything that I've mentioned regarding the segregation of duties issue, as well as the compliance issue of Medicaid. Slide nine is corrective action plan, which doesn't give you much detail. It just says that those plans are being created, and checklists and review procedures are being done. Not to provide any kind of a, excuse those, but Medicaid and various things, the Department Social Services have gone through tremendous changes over the past three years, with state mandate requires requirements on how applications are processed, how they're documented, how they're sold. So it's a process that they've been fighting, an uphill battle with, in addition to us coming in and looking over the shoulder. So I do thank DSS for all the things they've done to help us in our compliance and all that. Next, starting on slide 10, page 10, these are just pretty charts and graphs, colorful, that show information that I feel is relevant to the completion of our audit. What the dashboard that Lisa gives you on a monthly basis has a lot of detailed information. Here again, I want y'all to get home early enough to enjoy your evening, so I'm not going to go through a lot of it. I'll just hit the highlights. Again, if you see an area that you want me to stop, I'll be glad to do that. And if I can't remember it, I will give you some information very soon. Slide 10 just shows the analysis of general fund cash and cash equivalents over the past five years. You can see 2015 took a drop. This is just your general fund. So that's the cash that went to the jail, as well as other issues during the year, or other expenses during the year. Slide 11 is the cash of your business type funds. That would be the water district and the solid waste fund, so you can see that has been creeping up over the past four years. Slide 12 and 13, deeper general fund revenue comparison for the five years, so you can see how taxes have lined up for the past five years, expenditures by departments. Had big spike for 2013 in debt services to refinance, so that did show a large expenditure for that month, although you don't see a big spike in revenue because that was treated in a different area. The revenues are just operating and taxes and sales and services. Flipping on to page 14 and 15, those are the general fund expenditures compared to the operating revenue. But here, again, these are the revenues, and I just showed you the expenditures that I just showed you. For 2015, it burst even to a deficit of $338,000. That was full transfers. That included the additional money that went to the board of education. Then we ended up losing $1.4 million once we transferred the money to the jail. So an overall deficit with year of $1,400,000. The fund balance, which is slide 15, did show a drop, and that's to be expected with the expenditures that went on during 14 and 15. However, the jail project should come back to the general fund once the funding is available on the construction. So that $1.4 will have a much, just keep coming back in the next four months, is that part of what I mentioned at the start. Slide 16, just shows what your fund balance is doing compared to the state. It was creeping up, and then of course, as I mentioned, so it did fall below around 25%, which is below the state average. But it was right there at it, and hopefully, once the jail money comes back, it will see growth in your fund balance. Slide 17 and 18 just shows a piece of the pie for each of your revenue sources. For 14 and 15, slides 19 and 20, again, shows each governmental general fund, department, and its piece of your total budget for two years compared to the past. Greetings to slides 21 and 22. These are water revenue comparisons over the past five years, so you can see how tax fees have pretty much stayed down there. Water sales have gone up, of course, you've been adding areas and services. The miscellaneous expense that kind of spiked in 2015, that was mainly that came from the general fund, which has been transfers. And then the solid waste revenue, you can see how they've been going up and down over the past few years as well. Slides 23 and 24 show an analysis of the revenue and expenditure, so you can see your revenue exceeding your expenditures for the water fund. Solid waste fund, it did have a few more expenditures this year, so it did exceed the revenue. Closing out here, slides 25 and 26, deal with your property taxes. Your average rate this year is right below 96%. That's a big jump from last year. Part of that jump is 100% of the DMV. Of course, you know, 2013, '14 was the first year the state went to the vehicle collection of taxes there through the DMV, which makes, of course, your collection rate 100%. The last slide, you do see a slump in the total property valuation in 2013, '14 because of the way they initiated the system. It added three or four months in additional billing. So that actually will decrease the current year because it goes back down to its 12-month cycle, which the good news is it's still above what your values were in 2013. This, of course, is the value before rebound. Next year, it will certainly show a big difference as it has been in the past. We all know that the property valuation is the key indicator of growth in the county, where you've got new cat, new businesses coming in, or existing companies coming in and reinvesting or increasing the capital they have in the business. Are there any questions regarding any of our communications or financial comments? And also, again, I thank you, and feel free to contact me through Lisa, through Greg. My email address here in front of the presentation in one time.
Thank you. Good job. Next, Ms. Coleman's going to come up, item B.
Well, we can ask for a meeting now.
Right. You can close.
All right, and this is for the eighth month ending of December, February 29th. At the end of February, we had collected 74.17% of the revenue, and we had spent 61.96% of expenditures. The solid waste fund had collected 79.57% of the revenue and extended 64.76%. Emergency telephone had received 23.27% of the revenue and spent 52.03. Now remember, part of that being used for fund balance for the upgrades for the 911 system. Water department, we're at 69.06% of water revenue, and we have spent 43.92%. But June's coming, so we'll be making a big water bond payment at the first of June. Anybody have any questions about the dashboard? If not, I'll move on to item B. As you all know, we sought bids for audit services this year, and I sent out nine, eight. I sent out eight packets. I sent to Thompson Price Scott and Adams, Mrs. Brian Skinner, auditor, S. Preston Douglas and Associates out of Lumberton, W. Green LLC out of Flyville, Terry Becker CPAs, Martin Starnes and Associates, Dixon Hughes Goodman LLC, McGladrey and Fooley, and John Pettit. I received bids back from three. One declined, Terry Becker CPA's declined the bid at all, and heard nothing from Martin Starnes, Dixon Hughes, McGladrey, or Pettit. But this year's bids came in with a base rate for Thompson Price of $38,300 with a state procedures audit. And let me explain that. They have started something new, and I talked to Sharon Edmiston at the LGC. She says, "You can count on one of those at least every five to six years." And what it amounts to is that they do, the auditors have to do an internal procedure to check stuff that's recommended by the state. She said, "For all purposes, to bank on at least one within the next three years." So Thompson Price came in at 38.3 for the base with a state procedure of 25 for a total of $40,800, a three-year total of $117,400. S. Preston Douglas came in at a base of 36.5 with a state procedure audit of $5,000 for an annual cost of $41.5. And they also had escalated their costs three years. Each year, they went up. But their total cost for the three years was $118,400. And Wade Green came in at $43,000 with no cost for the state procedures, so there would be a total cost of $129,000. So it's my recommendation to present the audit back to Thompson Price Scott and Adams.
Motion approved. Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Edge. He just... Motion approved. Mr. Smith, second. Mr. Edge, any discussion? Everybody in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes carried. Motion carries.
All right. Our last item is number D, is to approve the contract with Thompson Price, Scott and Adam.
Motion approved. Ms. Smith, second. Mr. Page, any discussion on this? None. All in favor, aye. Oppose, no. And motion carries also. Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, if we could please revisit item A, and if we could have a motion to accept the audit that's presented.
Motion to receive financial audit.
Peterson made a motion, second by Mr. Edge. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it.
Number D.
E, board education.
One.
Seven, E, board education.
Seven, E.
Seven, E, board education.
Seven, E, off the board of education.
Put them on the table.
Those are A and B.
The board of education, come forward.
Board of education, come forward. Ms. Penny?
I didn't get that answer up until...
Is that fair?
Yeah, I didn't get it.
I request that you approve the law of refunding request for the roof, uh, looking to Washington School at 2048. And that's to replace the, because this group has had a complete failure of the media and classroom section of the building.
Motion approved. Thank you.
Ms. Peterson made a motion, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Everybody say aye. Oppose, no. Carries.
Thank you.
This time, Mr. Wayne Rayner, interim director, come forward, please, sir.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, items A and B are, they have been reviewed and/or approved by the Health and Human Services Advisory Committee in the March 14 meeting last Monday. The on-target of the fairness contract is actually a continuation contract. It was in place for a short period of time, and I appeared before this body of staff three months ago, and this is in place for a short period of time. This will be for a new fiscal year, and this contract helps the Health Department to prepare to do exercises and represent us at special meetings in Raleigh of our technical assistance reviews, sessions, and that sort of thing. And the individual comes on site when necessary to meet with our staff. Our on-site coordinator is Deborah Connor, our Director of Nursing. So this is a new, and there's really no specific changes in terms of contract agreement, conditions, and specifications.
You want to, can we approve both of them, or you want to talk about B?
I think our accreditation requires them to be handled separately.
Motion approved, A.
Ms. Peterson made a motion. Mr. Edge, second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. That's A and B?
A and B.
Just A. We need to do B?
Yeah.
All right. Consider approving a solid agreement with the State of North Carolina. Motion.
You got something to say?
It's a standard annual contract. We've reviewed it carefully for language changes and that sort of thing, conditions. They haven't changed appreciably.
Motion approved.
Bullet, motion approved. Got a second?
Right.
Mr. Cardell, second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes carried. Motion approves. Okay. Next on the item, we've got number nine, advisory board appointments. We've got Mr. Johnny Henderson. Blaber is retiring. That's one position we need to...
Don White. Motion to approve Don White, replace Johnny.
Don White.
I'll second that.
Mr. Smith, second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Motion table juvenile crime prevention.
Motion table. Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Table juvenile crime prevention council. Yes.
The preacher has to visit.
We got a, uh, we got a former, Janice Altri.
That's what you just tabled.
We tabled that one?
Yeah. That's what he said while I was there, then he not will.
Okay. Keyblade Beautiful, there's two appointments. We got Xavier Daniels and Christine Woodruff.
Appoint Larry Hayes in Xavier Daniels' place, and reappoint Kristen Woodruff.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Second. Dr. Blanks?
Billy, wait, second.
Okay, Billy, wait, second, that's fine. In discussion? In favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay. Larry Hayes and Kristen Woodruff. Why let your zoning board of adjustments?
Do you want Marshall DeAndre?
Motion, second by Mr. Page. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Marshall DeAndre represent the appointment. Okay. Next, County Manager, Greg Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
County update.
Yes, I'd like to briefly review the calendar week for the month of March. And point out, tomorrow, the 22nd at 7:00 p.m., the Minnesota County Association of Blading Meeting will be held in Blaber and the community buildings at 7:00 p.m. Also, I want to remind you, officers will be closed this Friday, the 25th, and in service of Good Friday in East Carolina. And next Thursday, the 21st, the 31st, the Board of Commissioners have a special meeting scheduled to weigh in for the budget that comes in the 16th. Also, I wanted to discuss a couple of other things coming up. Tomorrow, the 22nd, the long closing with BBNT related to the detention center project in on the town is given to take place, so that three departments will be involved. If everything is moved forward tomorrow with that, then the notice to proceed with the actual construction of the real project is take place in the 16th with the May 13. Moving over to April, there on Monday, the 4th, there's prayer service, the day A.M. at the Year, the Board meets eight in 6:30 p.m. On Thursday, the 14th, the Blading Fire Association meeting, we have a seven more fire call for the 16th. The Board of Commissioners meets on Monday, the 18th at 6:30 p.m. On Wednesday, the 20th, at 5:30, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners District meeting will be held in Marlin. On Monday, the 25th, at 6:00 p.m., there's a special 14 going to be weighed in. And then on Thursday, the 28th, on 3:00 to 6:00, the Health Department is having a meeting out, and you all are invited to that.
Is that the same day DSS is having ours too?
Not sure. I can know.
Well, don't DSS has one too, don't they?
I will, don't you dare. Mr. Chairman, any more questions you'd like to counter on item B? Tax Minister Renee Davis says, "Would the Board consider scheduling a special meeting regarding a couple of property tax amendments?" Opposed dates are next Thursday at 5:30. The Board has a special meeting scheduled for 6:00. Or Monday, the 4th, that's about the four remaining days, but which would they date today?
5:30.
Well, 5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
Motion second, Mr. Fries.
Second.
Well, there's 30 minutes, gonna be another.
Did you second?
You got nothing to set apart.
Ms. Carter made a motion. Ms. Peterson, second. Any discussion on this?
On what? On the 31st? I can't even...
5:31? 5:30?
5:30. We're gonna be at 6:00 anyway, and we're gonna do this at 5:30.
Why are you talking to him?
Only 31st.
Item B at the bottom.
No, on the 31st.
Call question, Mr. Fries.
No question?
5:30.
All right, this vote, we have a motion second this vote. Everybody in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes carries. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item C, as you know, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, Black Forest Counties, to meet with legislative delegation and then report back at the district meetings. Again, I could be held later in April in Walrus. And I just wanted to present that to you, see if you all are interested in scheduling a special meeting with our legislative delegation.
See anybody interested? Anybody on duty?
We don't miss a good stuff. But it's actually, we had to complicate this a little bit, as we recall.
Do they have any, did he check with them schedule when they're available?
Yeah, I just wanted to say before I...
Yeah, we're just checking, call around, and let's meet them. They will. Well, we need to work around their schedule, not ours.
Given the item D, the Board is requested to consider approving or actually moving to select ECS Carolina's LLC for the Special Inspection Services related to the law enforcement of detention center. As you all know, we did a request for qualifications. ECS is a very qualified firm. They perform work on the East Coast, the West Coast, and they actually did the designs for Blockade Number One down near East Arctaria, when I brought that fish package, package, probably, because the Board is willing to accept the firm, and the Board will accept the work, and come back to the Board with a formal agreement.
Motion approved.
Motion for Mr. Peterson.
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith. Any discussion? In favor, say aye, please. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Not one more, please.
Yes, sir. Also, moving on to item D, the Board is requested to put Moffitt and Nichols actually got a couple of details. The first item D agreement is with ECS Carolina is related to the law enforcement and detention center. Item E is related to the fish package. And if the Board is willing to accept Moffitt and Nichols as the engineering company that performed the design, then we'll come out with a settlement.
I've got one question. Greg, is this, weren't there some disgruntled citizens over this thing about doing this fish slider thing?
Not in my mind, no.
Thought it was organizational or it was against it?
It might be, but I have...
Okay, okay. Motion approved.
Ms. Peterson made a motion to approve it. Second, Mr. Edge. Any discussion on this item? No discussion? In favor, say aye, please. Oppose, say no. Ayes carry. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, we've got the, we've got the consider in enclosed session in accordance with NCGS 143-31811.
Motion approved. Mr. Bullet?
Before you need to leave the conversation, I am looking at, um, looking at, um, looking at, um, looking at, because that's one of the older buildings.
That's the older one. That's the oldest one.
But I guess, because we asking too much to ask the Board to...
They already gone, by the way.
No, no, I'm wanting to do it the next week.
We already approved it.
I know, but I'm asking the chairman to ask the Board, because I think this is one of those older buildings, some of these, that, and I just need to understand the rationale to keep putting these expenses.
Their board done, their board done. Okayed it.
No, I just, I mean, my own benefit.
Yeah, I understand that.
The bathrooms and those other parts of that building is so old, and I'm trying to understand the rationale.
The roof was, well, it had a bad roof on it somewhere.
And y'all should take the best of it on. What I'm saying, oh, go.
That's it, good, about that.
Just let me talk. See, the same thing for East Arctaria. These very expensive tops are being put on these old, old buildings. And I'm just trying to understand whether or not this is going to be a pattern for these buildings that I think were built back there during depression almost. But we need to take a look at the wiring, and the plumbing, and the bathrooms, and what's around internally to the building. It really all this money to put tops on these buildings.
Well, Dr. Blanks, we're gonna...
What is it, what is it?
Go ahead.
What are the future plans for utilization and spending this money, this much money, putting tops on these buildings that are so outdated?
We've got to...
We do that from the, I would especially...
We can ask Mr. Martin to check into it, but...
And Greg, um, you'll ask, I mean, back inside, and like Mr. Williams, were fresh built, and I'd be upset if it looked that. The plumbing and the wiring, and, uh, the other parts of those old, old buildings, we're sending back, putting the top.
Moving on, nothing.
What are the future plans, why do you, why do you...
Uh, Ms. Peterson?
Uh, Mr. Fries, if there's kids in these buildings, and the water's pouring through there, and the Board's approved the money to be spent out of lottery, then Greg needs to get back to Dr. Blanks, because I don't need to know, because to me, that's a board of education decision.
Yeah, that's interesting.
We just got the, we got lottery money. We need to make sure we got a roof over those kids that's in that school.
Well, I'm only asking if the Board will give me information, my knowing for East Arctaria, this lot. And this building was built about the same time. The condition of the plumbing, and the wiring, and electrical, that we're investing a top. Why do you be putting tops on these old, dilapidated buildings? This is a lot of tough.
We can't do any better. We don't have money. We don't have any money.
Call question, going close this.
Well, Charlie, really, please let me talk.
Greg said he was going to give you the information, Dr. Blanks.
Well, I'm asking the chair to direct, to the man.
I just told, Greg said he was gonna get it.
I'm not asking too much.
Greg's gonna, I'll get it, Dr. Blanks. I know what you're concerned about, but that's what they're doing, everybody. They asked for money and...
And I want to see the signs. If they look at what was in the zone, and what are their intentions, it's continuing to the building. So you spend that kind of money on something with every kind of plan. Something has been looked at.
Motion to go in, go six.
So, move.
Second. All in favor?